Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the city council to order on Monday, December 4th, 2023. If we have any disaster, you know that if it's a tornado, we go downstairs to the basement right across the hall from where Sarah collects sewer bills. And/or if we would have a fire, it would be outside the exit door here. Since the meetings are being videotaped, it's important that everyone speak directly into the microphone when speaking. So at this time, let's have Jenny call role of the elder persons.
Elder person Whitaker.
Here.
Elder person Schneider.
Here.
Elder person Duco.
Here.
Elder person Eris.
Here.
Elder person Randall. Elder person Ferguson. Elder person Anthony.
Here.
Elder person Ovian.
Here.
Elder person Dittelman.
Here.
Elder person Schaefer.
Here.
Elder person Steele.
Here.
Elder person Rothweiler. Elder person Elmore.
Here.
Elder person Weigant.
Here.
Elder person Sullivan.
Here.
Elder person Ostoff.
Here.
Mayor Randall, Ferguson, and Rothweiler excused.
Okay, thank you. Now, department heads. Jenny?
City Treasurer Bierman.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Present.
Police Chief Matt Iskant.
Here.
Fire Chief Stephanie Mills.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitrait.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Randy Smith.
Here.
Director of Library Lee Spearman.
Here.
Interim Director of IT Ty Buckner.
Here.
City Engineer Scott Sager.
Here.
Director of Health Housing Building Scott Tyler.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Planning and Zoning Cliff Cross.
Here.
Director of Human Resources Bill Clay.
Present.
Director of Maintenance Mike Schaefer.
Here.
Director of Recreation Don LaChance.
Here.
Mayor, everybody's present.
Okay, thank you. And if District 118, PAC 2, number Din, number 9, would like to come forward to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, we would love to have you. Thank you so much.
And then come all the way up through the gate.
Yeah, all the way up through here.
Come on up to the front.
All the way up.
Right here.
And you can face the mayor.
Hello, everyone. How are you this evening?
Keep going, guys.
Good.
So we're ready when you guys are.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could just turn around and quickly introduce yourselves. If all of you around the applause are coming out and helping us out tonight, how about we start with you?
My name's Tyler Garrett.
My name's Tyler Garrett.
My name is Benny Jordan.
My name is Ashton Warner.
Hi, my name is Tyler Kramer.
Hi, my name is Cole Reisenberger.
Hi, my name is Ari Holman.
Hi, my name is Jack Wilson.
I'm Din Leader. I'm Matt Reisenberger. I'm Cole's father.
We're so glad that you were here this evening to help us in the pledge. And I could tell by your behavior that you are all good scouts. Just keep up the good work. Thank you so much. You can be seated now. Okay, and so now we will start public hearing. But we're going to start with our Finance Director, Jamie Maitrait.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, I've prepared a very brief slideshow of some information about the tax levy, the proposed tax levy for this year that I'd like to go through before you open it for public comment. So as you can see from the chart, the total tax levy being requested for 2023 is $12,335,000. It's broken down, as you can see in the chart. Part goes to IMRF to pay for city employee public pensions, social security, which is self-explanatory, tort liability, which pays a lot of our liability claims, lawsuits, workers' comp, fire pension, police pension, which are, again, self-explanatory, to pay those state-mandated pensions. Playground and recreation for our Parks and Rec Fund, GCA, which stands for General Community Assistance. They have a general operating account and the assistance fund to provide state-mandated assistance, and the library. As you can see, the two biggest items by far are the fire and police pension. They make up over 68% of the total tax levy. There are only three lines that we're actually proposing to increase this year. As you can see in the far-right column, tort liability, fire pension, and police pension. In total, the proposed levy is increasing by $897,155 from the prior year, which is a 7.8437% increase. While I know that seems like a large increase, you can see over 874,000 of the increase is due to the required pension contributions to the police and fire pension, as determined by our independent actuary and mandated that we contribute to the pension plans to make sure they're adequately funded by 2040. First question everyone always asks me is what will this do to $100,000, or roughly to a house in the city of Belleville, to a resident? While the county has not yet finalized the equalized assessed valuation for the city as a whole yet, that doesn't usually come out until March. All I can do right now is estimate the impact. And to do that, I usually look at what the EAV was for the last year. So the actual was just under $469 million, and that's for the city as a whole. And while it's very unlikely that the total EAV will not change at all, this is obviously the easiest way to estimate the impact on a resident's home. There's an inverse relationship between the total EAV and the tax rate. Therefore, if the total EAV increases over that 2022 amount, the rate will decrease, causing the residence bill to increase by less than $52. I'd skip the part that says it'll be approximately $52 annually on a $100,000 home if the EAV stayed exactly flat, which, again, is unrealistic, but it's a benchmark. Obviously, with the inverse relationship, the opposite is true. If the EAV decreases, the tax rate will go up, causing an increase greater than $52. So again, this is just an estimate benchmark. We anticipate that probably the total EAV for the entire city will increase slightly. It went up significantly last year as Belleville was reassessed. I don't anticipate a huge increase again, but I also don't anticipate a decrease. As I explained at the finance meeting last month, even with the increase of almost $900,000 in what we are requesting, you can see from the chart that the estimated rate is still actually approximate to what it was in 2021, and still lower than it was in 2018, 2019, and 2020. Again, this is based off of an estimate. Again, if the EAV changes one way or the other, that number will go up or down. But it just is, I wanted to relay that even with this increase, because we've kept the taxes flat the last couple of years as a tax rate for the city's portion of your total tax bill, it's not going to be more than it was a couple of years ago. That was actually all the information I had to present, but I'm, of course, available if there's questions. This would actually not be voted on until next Monday night at the Finance Committee meeting, and then ultimately by the City Council on the 18th. And we would have to have an ordinance passed before the end of December.
Jamie, could you explain about the $100,000 on the assessed value of the home? For every $100,000, about what that would be? We know it's going to be estimated to be about $52, $53 a year. But when you break that down, about how much more would it be every month, monthly?
I mean, it's going to be between $4 and $5 if you're estimating it per month.
Okay. So now that Jamie has kind of explained what's going on, and we are mandated by the state to put money into the pension, the state actually invests the money. And if we lose money with the investments, or we don't make money with the investments, this is what helps to cause a tax levy. So we'll open this up now, since this is the proposed tax levying for 2023, and we're now open for public comments. So when you come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. If you would like to comment on this, if you would, please raise your hand and come forward. Yes, Mr. Hagberg.
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. This is the second time within six years or so that the levy has jumped by $1 million, mostly due to pension obligations. Many years ago, the council increased a sales tax by a quarter percent to pay for the downtown street scape bonds. These bonds have been paid in full this summer. And while I'm in favor of saying the sales tax increase for a very specific task, paying the bonds, and that task has been completed, I'm in favor of saying the sales tax should really just go away. But a couple of months ago at Finance, it was discussed, instead of having it go away, whether this money could be earmarked towards our pension obligations. I'm not opposed to that, something that council, I believe, should do some more talking about. It was just briefly talked about and dropped. There's also about a half a million dollars surplus in this fund right now. So why can't the council use that half a million dollar surplus to offset the million-dollar proposed increase in this year's levy? And then also look at earmarking the about $1.2 million a year to go towards our pension obligation? And this would be in addition to the required payments. And it would get us, it's not going to solve the problem next year to say our pensions are all good and caught up. But I think that over the years, it will make a huge difference getting us to that 2040 goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Come forward, please, and state your name.
My name's Jim Spalding. I live in Belleville. And I've looked here for 42 years, about eight on the west end, the rest on the east. And while I've been on the east in my taxes, property taxes have increased every year without fail. Sometimes it's been a couple hundred dollars, sometimes it's been $1,000, $500. And I just want to, I kind of don't understand that. But what I want to bring up is I think that we're kind of sitting on a ticking time bomb with, and I've just been exposed to this, and it really has more to do with the state of Illinois. I don't know if you guys can do anything about it, and I'm probably going to get booed and hissed over what I've got to say. And before I say it, I want to say that, you know, my parents were in the military. I have relatives that are in the military, and many people who are in the military. But living in Belleville and St. Clair County, where you live in an area where there's a military base, there's this thing, I don't, probably most people here know about it, maybe they don't. But if you're considered 70% disabled, and you're in the military or out of the military, retired, you pay zero property tax. I don't mean a few dollars, I mean zero. And when somebody told me that, okay, you're 70% disabled, you know, you figure somebody that's maybe uses crutches, a wheelchair, maybe missing a limb, you know, whatever it is. But come to find out that 70% disabled from the military can consist of just two things: high blood pressure, which probably about 80% of older adults have, and sleep apnea. That comprises being 70% disabled. These people that I know that have applied for that and received it do their own yard work, play golf, play tennis, play volleyball, and on and on and on. And a lot of these people, I never could, not that I'm bashing Belleville, understand, you've been all over the country, why do you retire in Belleville or in St. Clair County? That's the reason. I mean, these people have property taxes $10,000 plus. They pay nothing for them. So what do they do? They go over to Missouri and buy a lake home. And I'm all for giving military people something, you know, but to have no skin in the game whatsoever just doesn't seem right to me. Give them a 50% discount or some sort of discount, I'm all for that. But to have nothing, and I think we're losing a lot of tax dollars because of that reason. Being close to an Air Force Base or wherever, St. Clair County, I brought this up at a meeting I had with some people at the courthouse, and they agree with me. Is there nothing that anybody can do over something like that? That's my statement. I appreciate you listening.
Okay, thank you very much. Any more comments? You know, Belleville is one of very few cities around here that actually has a full-time fire department. A lot of the other cities that are around us is all volunteer. So we have a commitment with our pension system, not only for the firemen, but also for the policemen. So I hope that everybody understands that we're not happy to raise a tax levy. We're really not. No one in, on this council or any elected official is happy to do that. But we are a large city, and we do have protection that needs to be done in a city of our size. So I appreciate everyone who came out here tonight and is listening. And thank you, Jamie, for explaining it. And so if you are more informed, I hope you are, in case any of your neighbors ask or question you, you will have some information to give to them. So if there are any more comments? Yes, Mr. Ovian?
What bothers me is...
Rafi, I think you need to come down to the front here as a private citizen instead of speaking as an alderman.
What bothers me as a taxpayer, not as an alderman, is that we don't have a plan of action that's going to go ahead and basically fill the coffers. So the taxpayers of St. Clair County that live in the city of Belleville are not going to continue to go ahead and have to pay the extra tax on what they already are being hit with from their property taxes. It's not right. You know, years ago, we went ahead and allowed for people to live within a zip code that may have not been the city of Belleville. That was not a wise decision, as we've come to realize, because right now, we're not getting the full amount of the earnings that we should get if people lived in the city of Belleville that basically work as fire and police. Now granted, they don't live very far away, but you've got other communities like Freeburg, Milstott, O'Fallon, that are getting their residue of tax base, you know, from their residences that they live in. Belleville needs all the help we can get. We need to come up with, I posed it, and I said it, and I'm not going to be ashamed I've said it. For those people that don't live here in the city, they need to pay a city earnings tax.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And those communities that you just mentioned, not one has, they have volunteer fire departments. Makes a big difference. Okay. Okay, thank you all for your comments, and we will proceed on. So we will close public hearing now. And public participation for anything that is not related to the tax levy. Anyone have anything to say? Okay, hearing none. I will recognize the character word of the month, which is empathy, which means identifying and understanding others' feelings in order to get along better. Now, I'd like a motion to approve the city council and executive session meeting minutes of November 20th, 2023.
Still.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under Claims, Payroll, and Disbursements, I need a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of $3,220,762.77, and payroll in the amount of $1,164,583.34.
Schaefer, so moved.
Whitaker, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Role call.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Eris.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion to approve the treasurer's report of October 2023, and Statement of Cash and Investments Report of October 2023.
Schaefer, so moved.
Schneider, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. Let's start with Streets and Grades, Alder Person Dittelman.
I'd like to make three motions for the Streets and Grades Committee, if I could. Can we move them all together?
Yes.
Thank you. On 11A, one, motion to approve a contract with KRB Excavating Incorporated, lowest responsible bidder, in the amount of $342,424 to resurface Rob Avenue from South 19th Street to South 17th Street, and be paid for by Tiff Money, Tiff III. 11A II, motion to approve a memorandum of understanding with the St. Clair Township County Transit District for construction and maintenance of the North 66th Street shared-use path in the amount of $101,034. 11A III, motion to approve a professional services agreement with Gonzalez's Company LLC in the amount of $44,210 for the construction inspection of Rob Avenue resurfacing, Tiff III.
Eris, second.
Schneider.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Role call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Duco.
Aye.
Eris.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. And now, Mr. Dittelman, from a motion from Parks Board.
I'd like to make a motion for the Park Board on 11B I, a motion to name the South 21st Street entrance of Bicentennial Park. Includes splash pad, pavilion, and surrounding area, the Mark Eckert Plaza.
Okay.
Standing by, Elmore.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Role call.
Duco.
Aye.
Eris.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Motion from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Jenny, would you like a motion?
Together.
Together?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
11C I, 57 November 23, Ellen Federer, James Federer, request for a special use permit for a Class C liquor license at 6500 West Main Street, Suite 214, 07120-210025, located in C2 Heavy Commercial District, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248, 162.515. Ward 8, Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval in the name of the applicant only, with a vote of 5 to 0. 11C II, 58 November 23, ASP2 Steam Academy, request for use variance to establish and operate a private school at 424 Lebanon Avenue, 08220-118003, 08220-118004, 08220-118005, 08220-118014, located in C1 Light Commercial District, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.232, 162.570. Ward 1, Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval with a vote of 5 to 0.
Eris, so moved.
Schaefer, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Communications, Jenny?
Read them together?
Yes.
Okay. 12A, Spread the Love, 210, 2024, request from Belleville Main Street to host Spread the Love Saturday, February 10th, 2024, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., downtown Belleville. 12B, Lucky Leprechaun 5K, 316, 2024, request from Belleville Main Street to host Lucky Leprechaun 5K Saturday, March 16th, 2024, 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., rolling street closures, additional requests, police personnel barricades, and no parking signage. 12C, St. Patrick's Day Block Party, 316, 2024, request from Belleville Main Street and Oktoberfest to host the St. Patrick's Day Block Party Saturday, March 16th, 2024, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Street closure, South Jackson from East Main to parking lot entrances, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. East Main Street from High Street to the west side of Charles Street, first block of North Church, North Jackson to Olive Ways and Parking Lot, first block of South High Street from East Main to East Washington, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Patterborne Square, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Loading zones and parking spots, east side of South Jackson, Friday, March 15th, 2024, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, March 16th, 2024. Additional city services, police personnel barricades, no parking, signage, electric, trash troopers, sanitation vehicle, picnic tables, and cleanup. 12D, Main Street Mingle, 328, 2024, 725, 2024, 1119, 2024, request from Belleville Main Street to host Main Street's mingle Thursday, March 28th, July 25th, and December 19th, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., downtown Belleville. 12E, Main Street Kids' Day, 46, 2024, request from Belleville Main Street to host Main Street Kids' Days, Saturday, April 6th, 2024, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Request closure of Patterborne Square, Northeast Quadrant, Southeast Quadrant, and Public Square in East Main between 159 and High, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Additional services, picnic tables, trash troopers, no parking, and police personnel. 12F, Home Brew and Music Walk, 420, 2024, request from Belleville Main Street to host Home Brew and Music Walk, Saturday, April 20th, 2024, 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., downtown Belleville. 12G, Main Street Senior Days, 531, 2024, and 1018, 2024, request from Belleville Main Street to host Main Street Senior Days, Friday, May 31st, and October 18th, 2024, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., downtown Belleville. 12H, Craft Beer Walk, 629, 2024, request from Belleville Main Street to host Craft Beer Walk, Saturday, June 29th, 2024, 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., downtown Belleville. 12I, Halloween Window Painting, 105, 2024, request from Belleville Main Street to host Halloween Window Painting, Saturday, October 5th, 2024, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., downtown Belleville. 12J, Art and Wine Walk, 112, 2024, request from Belleville Main Street to host Art and Wine Walk, Saturday, November 2nd, 2024, 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., downtown Belleville. 12K, Downtown Cookie Stroll, 1213, 2024, and 1214, 2024, request from Belleville Main Street to host Downtown Cookie Stroll, Friday, December 13th, 2024, and Saturday, December 14th, 2024, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., additional services, access to City Hall as a cookie stop. 12L, BAHS Halloween Pet Parade Block Party, 1020, 2024, request from Belleville Area Humane Society to host Halloween Pet Parade Block Party Sunday, October 20th, 2024, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Street closure, city-owned parking lot at North High and East A, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., additional services, no parking, signage, trash troopers, and picnic tables. 12M, BAHS Halloween Pet Parade, 1020, 2024, request from Belleville Area Humane Society to host Halloween Pet Parade, Sunday, October 20th, 2024, 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., rolling closure along parade route, additional services, police officer, no parking, and barricades.
Eris, so moved. Schaefer, second.
Any discussion? Yes.
Mayor, I just got a question. Have we heard from any of our bigger downtown events like Art on the Square, or just seems like we're filling up a lot of the weekends and stuff?
No, it'll, none of these are out of the ordinary events. So these are not anything that's going to interfere with all the big ones. They usually hit me in January.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have no petitions and no resolutions this evening. So let's move on to ordinances, and I need a motion to read by title only. Ordinances ninety-one, ninety-nine, ninety-two, twenty-six, ninety-two, twenty-seven, ninety-two, twenty-eight, and ninety-two, twenty-nine.
Schneider, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask for discussion. Any discussion? Okay, so motion carries.
Can I read them together?
Yes.
Okay. Fifteen A, ordinance ninety-one, ninety-nine, twenty twenty-three, is zoning ordinance in regards to case forty, September twenty-three, Avenue Realty Associates, L L C. Fifteen B, ordinance ninety-two, twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, and ordinance dissolving the downtown south tax increment financing redevelopment project area, TIF eight. Fifteen C, ordinance ninety-two, twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, is zoning ordinance in regards to case fifty-seven, November twenty-three, Ellen Federer, James Federer, The Cheesecake L L C. Fifteen D, ordinance ninety-two, twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, is zoning ordinance in regards to case fifty-eight, November twenty-three, A S P two Steam Academy. Fifteen E, ordinance ninety-two, twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, and ordinance, pending ordinance number ninety-one, eighteen, twenty twenty-three, Nunk Pro Tonk. Eris, so moved. Schaefer, second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Eris.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business. Miscellaneous and new business this evening. I need a motion to approve motor fuel claims in the amount of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Schaefer, so moved.
Second. Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Evan, or Eris.
Aye.
Sorry.
Okay. Motion carries. Uh, we have no executive session this evening. And so I now need a motion to adjourn.
Schaefer. Eris, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and motion carries. Thank you.